Call the meeting to order at six fifteen. Uh, roll call. Um, citizen member provost.
Present.
Counselor Montigny.
Present.
Counselor Ortiz.
Present.
Citizen member Torres. Absent. She may be on her way, I'm not sure. And Counselor Rivas, present. We'll move on to item number three, review and discuss entering into an agreement with LPI communities for an eight-page colored monthly newsletter for the Cosvawn Senior Center at no cost to the town. Entertain a motion to recommend to the town council.
So, second.
Thank you. Um, Katie's here this evening. She had brought this proposal forward that she could get, uh, her newsletters printed. Again, at no cost to the town. We currently use color printer that we have to pay. Um, per copy, per ink and all that, so I think it's a pretty easy request to have that done. Do you have any questions, Katie?
No, I just wanted to, uh, right, because it says at no cost of the town or whatever. I just want to explain a little further. What they do based on my recommendations first, I will give the names of local businesses to reach out to that I personally may want, but that's what covers the cost of it. They will reach out to local businesses for advertising. So, an advertisement page would go in there for all these businesses that were covering the cost of the newsletter. And then I can send them all my information. They know it together in a nice newsletter, which takes a lot of time off my hands and then I think I can do them two weeks before the new month and they'll have it to me within five days and plenty of time for distribution.
Any questions?
If a company wants to advertise, how much and how would they contact somebody?
That I don't know. I don't know how much it is. Like, if you're interested, give me your name, because they will ask me first. You have specific people that you want to work with and then they'll, but then I think they go to like a bank and a tool or something, you know what I mean? So they'll work off what they do all the work, which I won't.
Okay.
So, if you want it, give me your information. I can give them.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else? Counselor Montigny?
Thank you, Chairman Trujo. Uh, LPI is Liturgical Publications Incorporated, which is a Catholic organization. So, when we were on the ARPA subcommittee, we wanted to give a grant to Notre Dame. And Notre Dame for their, for their boiler, the La Salle. And, um, but we told them at the time that if we gave them this grant, they would have to allow anyone to use the hall. Any denomination, any religion, even non-religious people. And so they actually turned us down, turned the grant down because of that, because of that rule. So I'm just wondering, is this going to be the same thing here? Because it is a Catholic organization. Are we going to have to insist that they allow anyone to advertise in this newsletter? I know it says in the small print, all rights to revenue from service. They've got all the rights to their other one. The town shall not grant other parties advertising rights. So I'm just wondering, is it going to be the same rules that, uh, were brought up during the ARPA subcommittee?
Mr. Manley?
I'd have to research that more. I wasn't aware. I, I do remember that conversation, so.
I, I don't know if it's the same type of thing, but with the ARPA money that they refused, the other, uh, colleagues went to the diocese. You know, it was the diocese that made the decision not to accept the grant. And I, for the, for what, same reasons that Congressman Katie mentioned, but it was, it was the diocese that, uh, refused the money.
Anyone else want to address that question? Yeah, I'd be interested in that.
Yeah, no.
Answers.
Corporation, so.
I, I understand the diocese and, and.
Any other questions? I have a quick question. So currently you just create the newsletter?
Yes.
Okay.
I created, I upload everything, I print everything, I staple everything, put them all together. So, like you said, like our printer is rented. So, for every piece of paper that comes out of it, I'm paying for it. I'm paying for the toner. I'm paying. It's a lot of time and money.
So would this, so because this would save you ti- some time, would we be, would you be able to, would they be able to produce the newsletter in multiple languages since that is saving you some time?
Um, I don't know. I would have to ask them.
Yeah, I'd be curious, um, because that would be great if they could add that or just, you know, put it through Google Translate or something so that we could have it in, you know, a couple of different languages.
I can ask.
Thank you. Any other questions from the audience? All right, all those in favor? All those opposed? Abstain unanimous. Item four, review and discuss applying for the United Way after-school and out-of-school programs for summer programming activities by the recreation director. Entertain a motion to recommend to the town council.
So, second.
I know during the budget season, Michael had told us that he had done this grant last year.
Yes.
And this is a reapplication for this coming year for these, uh, programs that we do. Michael's here if you have any further questions.
Any questions? Counselor Montigny?
You know about how much the grant could be? You know, it says between ten
Yep.
and fifty thousand.
I, yeah, I went to an open office, um, Friday to, uh, get some questions and, um, it can be between ten and, uh, fifty thousand, um, but it can also be below. Last year I requested five thousand and that was very nice, um, but I also have some plans to spend a little bit more. Probably somewhere in the range of five thousand to ten thousand, I'd be happy.
Any other, any other questions? I just have, um, I have a couple. Um, will the program change this summer? Will there be anything added to the program?
Um, I'm planning with this more funds to have, there are more in-house, um, field trips. So essentially like speakers and, um, STEM presenters, people that lead activities based on, um, you know, culture, art, science, anything like that. Um, so probably have a few more of those. And, uh, hopefully just getting full staff. The last two years I was working understaffed. So I got a better jump with NOR this year and I can use these funds to actually offset pay. So I could pay an extra, you know, dollar or two to the staff, kind of do a little bit of incentive to
Yeah.
to get them to stay for the summer.
That's great.
Yep. So I'm hoping that helps. Um, I want to have it manageable for my staff and myself, so I try to keep a ratio of kids usually around like seven kids to one staff. So if anything, this year it'll just be more staff and more children.
Okay. How, how many more kids will you be able to serve?
I'm hoping to have around like forty-five.
That's great. And last year you had how many?
Uh, signed up around, I would say, we capped it at thirty, but day in and day out it was around like maybe closer to like eighteen to twenty. So that's why I'm thinking if I have a few more of them.
Yeah.
Yeah, one of my year.
In the same ages?
Uh, yes, I have five to eleven and then Cops and Kids take over twelve.
Okay.
And then I believe Twenty First Century also has their own
Yeah.
summer programs.
Anyone else?
Just, yeah, we did have quite the conversation about not only the coordination of the school, you know, Twenty First Century, but Cops and Kids and the town program and how we can all like try to enhance it and work together for a stronger program for everybody and all of yous.
Absolutely. I remember. Anyone else? Right. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Abstain unanimous. Item number five, review and discuss the acceptance of a donation from the Patent Alliance to the town of Southbridge to be used by the community center in the amount of five hundred dollars. Recommend that the town council vote to accept the donation with a stated purpose.
So, second.
Thank you. Through you, Chris from, uh, Green Meadows had contacted our office about giving a donation to the community center for whatever they choose to use it for. Any donation to the town is greatly appreciated, so it would go to however the community center sees fit. We thank them for their donation from the patent alliance. And they were there to, they were there actually at the, uh, the other morning, uh, to present the track with the seniors there for the lunch and all that, so it was a great, uh, program. So we're, we're happy to take that donation.
Any questions on committee? All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Abstain unanimous. Item six, review and discuss the town manager's reappointment of Margaret Morrissey to Director of the Jacob Edwards Library for a term of three years. Entertain a motion to recommend to the town council.
So, second.
So, uh, Margaret here, this is Jim Dyer from, uh, the Library Board Trustees, Chairman of the Board. If they want to come up, they can come up. But, uh, you know, Margaret, obviously the longtime, um, Director of Library Services, trustees are in favor of us reappointing them, so that's how it gets coordinated. So I gladly and happily put forward her, uh, appointment.
Do either?
Sure. Jim Dyer, nine five Highland Street, uh, second term, um, on the Library Board Trustees and serving currently as the chairman. On behalf of all of the board, uh, we've come tonight to express our unanimous, um, agreement with the manager about reappointing Margaret. Um, the library is certainly a gem of our community and under her leadership, there's new and innovative programming, um, each and every day and every year, so we will highly endorse her reappointment for a three-year term.
Thank you. Margaret, did you want to say?
I accept.
Perfect. Any questions from the audience? All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Abstain unanimous.
So, uh, Margaret, why don't you come up here so that people can hear you on the microphones while we do the next two?
Yes, and we're happy that you accept. Thank you very much. Go forward. Yeah, that would have been a big all course.
Thank you.
Item number seven, discuss the creation of a poet laureate position for the town of Southbridge and recommend to the town council to take any action there, thereon.
So, um, this has come up a couple of times because the library does.
I think they have to pick a motion for it.
Oh, yeah, yes.
For this question?
Yeah.
Sorry.
When we were discussing. Oh, okay, oh, to take any action. So, if I could. Uh, Margaret, uh, my, uh, when I first started, had a whole honk laundry list of things that we reviewed. Spent about two and a half hours with Margaret and then, um, she, the next two things were items that have been on the like, uh, list of things she wanted to, uh, bring forward. And we were going through all the capital, all the things that we're trying to do. So she, this was one incentive that she wanted and the chess park was the second. So I did not, uh, put through the memo to, to you originally because I didn't know, uh, what her thought was of the name of the person, if that was known or not. So I didn't want to send the original memo. So I'll let her explain the poet laureate, uh, concept and what she was looking to do.
So, um, thank you for entertaining the motion. Um, Bill Tremblay, for, sorry. I should start by saying the, uh, the position of a poet laureate is not uncommon in many Massachusetts cities and towns. Mostly the bigger cities. It's, um, it's an honorary and nominal kind of, uh, appointment. It's a recognition of somebody who has provided literary, uh, context and, uh, you know, enjoyment for the community and, um, there is no dollar amount attached. It's purely honorary. Um, the only obligation on the person who would be, um, promoted to this position would be to present, uh, a lecture during, uh, National Poetry Month, which would be April, um, of that year. The position can be extended for a further second year, but then that would be it. It would be capped at that. So, um, I have somebody in mind, somebody who has, uh, grown up in this community. His name is Bill Tremblay. And he, uh, graduated from Southbridge High, uh, with a football scholarship, um, in nineteen fifty-seven. He, um, has been a prolific poet and writer and teacher and critic. And has, um, his latest book, uh, The Luminous Racetrack, he actually, uh, did the honor of, um, uh, premiering it at the library here in Southbridge, which is his hometown. Uh, so he, um, to me is somebody I've interacted with over many, many years. And I feel that it would be a nice way of the community, first of all, creating a position which would recognize a talent in a, in the community or from the community and then somebody specifically naming, namely Bill Tremblay. Um, the information about him is in the, I actually gave out all my copies, so I don't have the, uh, thank you. But, um, just for the, um, for those that are old, um, he, uh, Bill Tremblay was, uh, was, has distinguished himself as the captain of the football team in nineteen fifty-seven and in combination with his academic success, led him to Clark University where he was awarded a Bachelor of Arts in English Literature and a Master of Arts in American Literature. He subsequently received a Master of Fine Arts in creative, in creative writing, poetry from the University of Massachusetts Amherst, the MFA Program for Poets and Writers. He is an award-winning poet as well as a novelist, teacher, editor and reviewer. And so he has been, uh, he has been a professor at Colorado State University for many years and has recently retired to Quincy, Massachusetts. And as I said, um, he did, uh, launch his book, Luminous Racetrack here on January twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three. Um, and then just to name the towns that have poet laureates, Amesbury, Arlington, Boston, Martha's Vineyard, Northampton, Plymouth, Rockport, Somerville, Springfield and Worcester. And I think we would be among an, um, a nice group of, uh, towns and communities that have recognized talent in their community if we were to, uh, mo- motivate for this position. So I would ask you to consider this as a suggestion for this community.
Any questions?
Thank you. Uh, Chairman Trujo, to maybe the town manager or Margaret, uh, what would we have to do, uh, as a council? What kind of motion would you be looking for the council to see?
I'm going to defer to Margaret because it's just her proposal, so.
Okay. So, um, we would just, uh, sort of like a proclamation style thing of setting up this honorary position, making it clear that there was no, uh, salary or anything like that involved, uh, pardon me, and that, um, uh, there would be a, uh, an obligation to present a program during that year, which would be in the April of that year.
Okay. So could I?
The actual wording I don't have, but I could get, I could get that from probably one of the other communities that are listed on the.
Sure. Well, could I make a motion that the town manager works with the director of the library to uh, create this position for, to appoint Bill Tremblay?
As the inaugural poet, as the inaugural, um, poet laureate.
What do we have to create the position first?
Yeah, I would say whatever has to be done.
Well, to create the position, the poet laureate positions for the Jacob Edwards Library, town of Southbridge.
Yeah.
Is that how?
I'll make whatever motion is appropriate.
I think it would be just the town, the town of Southbridge.
Town of Southbridge, poet laureate.
Poet laureate, yeah.
Recommend, um, the creation of an honorary, um, poet laureate position for the town of Southbridge.
Yeah.
Does that sound?
It sounds fine, yeah.
So I'll make that motion. Second.
Any questions? Anyone? Audience? I just want to say that I'm really excited to, um, hear that we're doing this in Southbridge.
It's time.
It is definitely time and as a poet, it's exciting to, to, um, you know, to be part of recommending that we do this. So, um, I have one quick question. Would you, would you then follow up by creating a junior poet laureate? I know in Worcester they have a junior, just thinking about students and kind of inspiring them to, to.
That would be the intent down the road, but I think I'd like to walk before I run. Because, um, I think it could be a little more complicated with younger people, working with them. Um, what this position, as I envisage it, is to recognize somebody who's already, uh, you know, established themselves and so there would be no, um, difficulties with the position. Whereas, um, I think working with teens might just, you know, we'd have to involve maybe the school as well and I think it'd be, might be a little more difficult. So, yes, the intent would be there, but, um, more long-term. I'd like to see this working. And this may not be something that they'd be an appointee every year. You know, um, it might, there might be years where there wouldn't be anybody and then, you know, somebody might come to the fore. So it would have a, like a specialness, uh, you know, to be something that might only happen every now and again.
Wonderful. Counselor Shem.
I understand you're making a motion to make the position.
To create the position, correct.
Would it be in order that you also make a motion to appoint Mr. Tremblay to that position? So would be done all at the same night?
Let's, let's tackle this first.
Yeah, I would say, let's vote for the position and then we'll talk about the, the.
Any further questions on create, the creation of the position? Okay, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? Unanimous.
Now, do you have a vote to, uh, that the town, Southbridge, appoint?
Yeah, Tremblay, that would be the.
Is it William or Bill?
Bill. Bill.
Bill.
I would make the motion if you'd like a recommendation from us.
Thank you.
So motion, second.
As the inaugural honorary
Yeah.
poet laureate for town of Southbridge. Right?
Sounds good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any discussion, any questions?
Other questions, more of a statement. This gentleman not only academically was outstanding, him being on a fifty-seven team, that was an era that a lot of people don't remember, but they had four, three undefeated seasons in a row, fifty-six, fifty-seven and fifty-eight. And then in sixty, they were undefeated all the way to the Bartlett game. That's how many consecutive wins this gentleman was involved in athletically. So I think this guy is, you know, when you turn around and think an athlete and academics and put it together, it's, it's outstanding, a person like this in front of us.
Is there a term for that? I mean, a length? When we do that, is there a one-year term?
One year, one year. And, um, as I say, it can be extended for a second year, but then that would be it.
For, for a term of one year?
One year.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, in the future, is it limited to only poets or can cartoonists supply as well, former cartoonists?
I think we need to think about that as a separate, it's, it's a separate art form. No. Well, I'm taking it seriously.
Yes.
I have my own cartoon, thank you.
I think we all do that.
Yeah, so thank you very much on that.
Only poets, only poets. Any, any other serious questions? All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Extensions unanimous.
Thank you very much.
All right. Item eight, discuss the creation of a chess park at the Jacob Edwards Library and recommend to the town council to take any action thereon.
So, Chairman Trujo, this was another, uh, initiative that Margaret had brought forward, uh, and I'll let her articulate it. There'd be no cost to the town. I believe a lot of the cost also would be with the board of trustees, correct?
Well, actually, not, not quite. So, um, the initiative is to build a chess park at the library on the southeast corner where the, um, the Tin Man sculpture is at the moment around that area and that's actually in your map as you can see here. Um, the trustees, the board of trustees have already paid for, uh, a survey to be done of the whole property, uh, in preparation for this, um, project. And they have also paid for, um, the commissioning of this concept plan by Joe Cohen, Joseph Cohen, um, landscape architects. And then the idea being to, the next step would be that would be fundraised for in the community. And the hope is, and that's why I'm here this evening, is that would the, um, finance department at the town of Southbridge be able to, um, do the, you know, to, uh, be in charge of the fundraising, uh, to, you know, the, uh, accounting of the fundraising? So that I think we would, um, allow the community to really feel that there's, you know, that their money is going someplace and they could, you know, they have a trust because we don't have a five oh one C three. So that is the next option is that the town would be the, um, uh, financial, uh, person or entity. Um, it's rather a grand plan, but it's a, it's stemming from the fact that the library has, for the last number of years, um, Ben Marinelli has been instructing children and adults at the library on how to play chess, playing chess and going to, um, actual competitions. And it's just really raised the profile in the community. Um, I know the schools had been doing this at one point. Um, Mrs. Pishi was, um, very much to the fore in teaching kids how to play chess. So there's a lot of chess players in the community and we saw the results of that when we started to advertise this. Uh, that people could come on Saturday mornings as it was in the beginning, then it went to Monday evenings. And now we're back at Saturdays again because Saturday is the better day. So, um, so we're hoping to, uh, have something outdoor as well as indoor, partly because the library is closed during the summer, um, in the evenings. Um, you know, people like to play as well. So Saturday mornings we're closed and we're closed, um, except for two evenings a week. So this would provide more opportunity and it'd be a lot more visible and the optics would be really good driving through Southbridge to see this. So people, it will, it would advertise itself. You know, you'd see these, um, chess tables spread around the perimeter, but also an enlarged board as you can see in the drawing, um, which would be, uh, with pieces, I think eighteen to twenty-five inches high. So they would have like quite a, an impressive, um, impact, I think, on the community. Uh, it would add, I think, to the, um, beauty of the library and make the library look more functional, rather than just seeing, you know, the, the brick facade with two, um, with the two sculptures outside. I think it would just be more attractive and it would show what the library is trying to do and that there's the library is outside the walls of the library as well, you know, that it extends to the whole perimeter. And we are very lucky to have, uh, a corner plot, which, you know, is on Foster Street as well as Main Street in the, um, Victorian downtown. So it's, it's very attractive. Um, I think it would provide entertainment and recreation for, um, the community and it would be an intergenerational, um, opportunity as well. Um, language wouldn't be an issue because, you know, if you know how to play chess, you're not even talking. And, um, I think that's a big thing because it would show, you know, that connectivity. Um, I just think it's, it's something when I came to America and walked, walked around New York and saw all these people playing chess outside in, you know, on walls and not even on like designated chess places. And I just felt very much on the outside of it because I didn't know how to play chess, but I thought if I knew how to play chess, wouldn't that be a great way of connecting? And I think I've had that idea since and we've been fortunate that Ben Marinelli has, um, been offering this instructional service, which I think really makes a difference. So nobody is at a, at, at an advantage or a disadvantage. He can, um, he has had people, you know, each individual at a board and he plays each board and goes around and so, um, this could be also happening outside. And as I say, the limitations of our hours wouldn't be affected, which I think is critical. It would, you know, I mean, it would have to finish it, you know, and the lights go out and stuff like that. I mean, it would have to be reasonable. People could be playing chess all night, but, um, I think it would be a good, a good thing for the community. Um, if I may, could I ask, uh, Jim Dyer to speak on this as well? Maybe he might have something to say.
Let me just take some questions and then I'll have Jim.
I was just gonna say, uh, could we make a motion to vote to create a chess park and an account that can accept donations for the chess park? I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay, and now discussion. If Jim wants to speak, go ahead.
Sure. Uh, thank you, through you, Chairman. Um, and off on what Margaret said, the community really, um, is blessed to have been. Um, to talk on what Margaret said, the community really, um, is blessed to have Ben Marinelli in our chess program and instruction, um, with his experience and that of his wife, who's got significant, um, significant experience in fundraising and grant writing. He believes that there's a pathway to raising the necessary money for this. So we're appreciative of your consideration of, um, being the financial agents of, of the receiving the, uh, the money. And, um, the board agrees with Margaret's vision for the, the outside of the library and, um, sort of expanding the, the programs of the library from just inside the four walls to outdoors as well. Thank you.
Any questions?
Um, I just have a quick question. Uh, what are, what is the average age in, that can compete or, you know, work with Ben while they're, you know, playing chess? Or is it like a, a little club?
It's open to all, but, um, I suppose the average age is probably about thirty because there are young kids and then there are older people, you know? So I'd say the middle would be about thirty or forty.
So there's like a youth and an adult.
It's, and it's mixed. And that's, I think, what's really nice about this is that people can, you know, it's intergenerational. And it, you know, you could be, just because you're ten doesn't mean you're not an ace player, unfortunately. That seems to be how it goes. So, you know, you can have people of, uh, different age groups playing together and being well-matched in terms of their ability and skill. So it has a, it has a very leveling, uh, uh, effect.
Any other questions? Questions from the audience?
I do have one question. Um, do we have like an estimate of how much money needs to be raised?
Not an exact one. I think it'll be, well, it'll definitely be six figures. Um, but under five hundred thousand is as much as I can say at the minute. But, um, you know, the way construction and materials, the prices are going like crazy. And, uh, you know, the longer we wait on something like this, we're going to find that, that we're going to be up against that kind of, um, inflation. But, um, there are ambitious, you know, plans we're doing, you know, for this park. And maybe we, um, when we price it out, we will, you know, it's still at the stage where, where this is just an outline plan. And the Board of Trustees are going to kind of flesh it out more in terms of what they would like to see, you know, um, sort of permanent pieces to add to this. So it's still under review, but, um, you know, we could be surprised. Maybe the fundraising would be that good.
Uh, thank you, ma'am chair. So just to clarify, it's important that, uh, the town at least create an account for you to be able to start receiving donations.
Absolutely. Yes. I think that would be the
The first step to making this project work.
And it will give us, uh, like it will legitimize the whole thing. We have been having, um, a copy of the plan. It's on display in the library and it's also on our website and has been on our e-newsletter. But it, to go the next step is really important because it's kind of in a holding pattern right now. And I think to, to keep the momentum there, to keep the players interested and to, for them to feel that it is moving along.
That's what the council could do is, is create an account to receive donations. Okay.
I have a question, Margaret.
So I know that you mentioned that the Board of Trustees have funded the serving, the planning, and the landscaping and architect. Is the funding, the new funding gonna, uh, include the construction? Or do you have a bid for that? Or I know you mentioned you guys are still kind of
Yeah, we're still putting that together. So the next step is to start the fundraising. And at the same time, the, the Board of Trustees will, uh, finalize what they would like to see and get more of a spec, you know, that we can go out to bid on.
So will they be funding the construction as well?
Um, I don't believe so. You know, they have contributed quite a bit already. Uh, I'm sure they will be, you know, very supportive and even maybe financially as well, but I can't speak on their behalf. Um, I think they've done, like, they've got the concept going and now it's presented to the community as an opportunity, I think.
I think you have values.
Yeah, that's wonderful. Any other questions from the audience?
I just have one additional question. Um, just thinking from all the comments about the sign out here. But, um, and not that this is anywhere near that, but just, um, when the architects put this together, um, were, was the historical commission involved? Or kind of like thinking about the aesthetic and how it fits into the, um, the character? I mean, I, from looking at it, it does, but I'm just
Yeah. Well, formally, uh, no, they weren't approached. But, um, I think with my background and the, being, having been on the historical commission for many, many years and, you know, like I have shown this drawing to many people who are on the historical commission. So, um, we got positive feedback. So I don't anticipate, uh, something like that, um, happening. Because it is very much in keeping with, you know, the structures downtown, it's granite. So, you know, the foundation of the library is granite, so it continues out that. Um, and, um, I, I think with the, uh, planting on the, on the, around the sculpture as well, it'll soften all that kind of, um, kind of brutalist kind of architecture. So I think it'll, it'll be in keeping, I believe. Um, but I think it'll serve to be like, almost like a s- a sign in itself, like an advertising of what goes on at the library. The library's a fun place. It's not all about books. You know, that kind of thing. Subliminally, I think it'll, um, put that across. And I think that's really important. It's like, it's like a sign without words.
Yeah. Yeah. No, I love it. And I, and I agree. I just, just putting that question on the record just to make sure. All right. Any further questions, comments? All right. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Extentions unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just tip our your pen, please.
Thank you.
All right. We'll now entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you. concludes our meeting.